Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Hello, my name is Megan Saffery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person and streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight is a continued public hearing on the Packwood Subarea Plan and a workshop on population and housing allocations. A reminder, the Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Commissioner Alves, and Commissioner Trastain. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Corbin, Commissioner Fritsch, and Commissioner Foster. And Commissioner Russell is excused tonight. So with six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We are now ready to begin. Chair Spogen.
Yes, my name is Lori Spogen, and I'd like to call to order the March 28, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, we received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
And if there's no discussion, let's take a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
This is Commissioner Corbin. I vote aye.
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Thank you. Also, prior to tonight, we received the meeting notes from the March 14, 2023 meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Corbin votes aye.
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comment tonight? Please note that testimony on the Packwood Subarea Plan is closed, and we're no longer taking comments on that plan. This is a chance to provide comments on other items. Megan, has anybody signed up? Raise your hand.
No one has signed up in the room, and I did not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then tonight's first agenda item is a continued public hearing on the Packwood Subarea Plan, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner, and I'm presenting on the Packwood Subarea Plan this evening. Also here tonight are representatives from the Community Advisory Committee. That Kim and Dennis, you guys have met them before. They are here. So if you guys have questions as we go through this, that you want to hear more about the advisory committee conversations, they are here to provide that to you. So, okay, next slide. So before we go into you guys' deliberations, I'm just going to do a really quick summary again of the testimony you received. I'm going to go over the Community Advisory Committee reconvening. That information was provided in the staff report. The staff report is also online for the public to review. And then we will move into staff recommendations. And please do stop me along the way. I have some questions for you guys throughout here too, but I do want you to stop me along the way if you want to. So starting with some reminders. You guys know this. I'm just going to go over the reminders though, so we have it all in our head. You guys are recommending the Packwood Subarea Plan to the Board of County Commissioners. The Subarea Plan, if adopted, will become part of the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan. You can recommend it for adoption as presented. You can recommend adoption with amendments that you propose and vote on. You can recommend rejection of it. Or, as staff recommended in the staff report, you can remand it back to the advisory committee for some additional work. No matter what you decide, the Board of County Commissioners is the decision maker, and they will have a public hearing to take testimony before they make their decision. Next slide. The Community Advisory Committee created this plan. So is the work of a 35-member committee made up of residents, business owners, and interested community members. Staff's job was to facilitate this conversation. They met over a year. They had 12 meetings, two hours each, to put this plan together. There was also a lot of other public engagement that happened, including meetings with the community, online surveys, business interviews, and that information was also provided to the advisory committee so they could incorporate that into the plan. Next slide, please. As you guys already know, this is Phase One. Phase One is goals and policies. It's the guidance document. Phase Two is implementation. We are required by the Growth Management Act to implement this plan. So what you adopt, we will have to implement. And that means writing development regulations to implement portions of this plan where it's appropriate. So an example is land use, biggest topic that you guys are discussing here. There are no regulations in the plan. What you're looking at are land use designations that they're not zoning. There's no zoning associated with them. They're designations, right? But if this land use designation map is adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, we then have to write development regulations to implement it. That's why the land use map is a big deal, right? Because we do have to turn around and write those regulations to implement that map. Next slide. The plan, again, does not drive the growth in Packwood. That growth is already occurring in Packwood, and with infrastructure like the sewer, the growth will pick up in Packwood. The plan guides the growth. That's what this plan is intended to do, is to manage and guide how the growth happens. Affordable housing is a primary focus of the plan, the big focus of this plan. Other important elements of the plan include safety on Highway 12, creating a sustainable economy, supporting families living in Packwood, and making sure that people can age in place. So those are all the big topics that are in the plan. You are focusing a lot on land use, which makes a whole bunch of sense, but it's not just about land use. That's not the only thing that this plan is about. There are a whole bunch of non-land use goals and policies, and those require non-regulatory implementation. So we do, because of your guys' purview with the land use piece, spend a lot of time thinking about that, and that will turn into development regulations. But there's a lot of other stuff that depends on partnerships or grants or other tools in order to implement this plan. So there's quite a bit in there. This boundary here, this is the only area for which the goals and the policies apply. It is the only area for which any new regulations that would be created in Phase Two would apply, is that black line subarea plan boundary. The neighborhoods of High Valley and Timberline are not included in this plan. So the goals, the policies, any future development regulations would not apply in High Valley or Timberline. They only would apply to that subarea plan boundary. Before I go to a summary of testimony, any questions about that overview? Okay, seeing none, no hands raised online that I can see. Okay, cool. Then we will move on. Testimony. We received 22 written pieces of testimony. We had 12 verbal pieces of testimony last two weeks ago, not last week, two weeks ago. 20 of the written were in support, some with some requested changes. Two written were in opposition. The verbal, ooh, typo. The verbal was all generally in support, but there were some requested changes. The requests for amendments included changes at the historic Mill property, there are land use designations, a change to the land use designation for the Huntington Road property, short-term rentals, less density in downtown, and that there are near-term fixes that would be required. The ones in bold were the amendments that the Planning Commission directed staff to bring back for tonight's continued hearing. So the historic Mill property, Huntington Road property, and short-term rentals. And that's the subject of the staff report. Any questions about the testimony before we move on? No hands raised? Okay. So after the March 14 hearing, I reached out to the advisory committee with an email about short-term rentals. I received a lot of responses from the advisory committee about the short-term rental piece, but also about the other requests for changes, the land use designations, particularly a lot of questions and concerns about the Huntington Road property. So I felt it was really important that we reconvene the advisory committee and let them weigh in on it. So I did that super quickly. We reconvened last Monday. It was a very fast turnaround for them so that we could have a discussion together and express concerns. We met on March 21st. First, it was in person. It was also via Zoom. I know not everybody could be there, right? So we didn't have a full advisory committee because that was too fast of a turnaround for everybody. But we did have a large group, a good group of people there. We only discussed those three topics. The Mill property, the Huntington Road property, and short-term rentals. We didn't discuss anything else. And I included all of that in the staff report that I'm going to go over here in a second. Next slide. But I'm going to jump to the punch. Given how important these unresolved items are and the fact that the advisory committee is feeling rushed to come up with solutions right at the 11th hour, staff recommend that you close the hearing tonight with no recommendation and that you remand the plan back to the advisory committee. I suggest too that you direct the advisory committee to focus on the land use designations map, particularly the properties around the airport and the Mill property and short-term rentals. I wanted to give you this recommendation now because if you do remand it, the advisory committee will meet on these three issues. We'll probably have three or four meetings, and then we'll be able to bring back a fully formed proposal on those three topics for you to consider. So we'll go over what they've talked about right now. They did not resolve issues is the bottom line on those. Okay, next slide. Short-term rentals. Let's start with that one. So remember, keep this in your mind, and this is something we talked about at the advisory committee quite a bit. We are only talking about the subarea plan boundary. When people talk about short-term rentals, a lot of the concerns that you hear have to do with other areas that are considered part of Packwood but are not part of the subarea plan boundary. But any policy and any regulations that come later would only be about that space. General outcome of the discussion was that we need to better understand the actual impacts and develop solutions for those impacts. There are a lot of assumptions about short-term rentals and the impacts they have, but not a lot of analysis and data, right? And most of the brainstorming that we did around solutions are not Packwood-specific. These are countywide, right? And that's where the advisory committee landed last time. Solutions are really more of a countywide issue when it comes to short-term rentals, not Packwood-specific. But we did brainstorm some ideas. Next slide. So I'll go over these. There's no hierarchical order. We didn't like, this is not in some priority order. This is just the smattering of the conversation. So this is the list of sort of what we brainstormed and talked about. Ensure that short-term rentals follow the existing rules for licensing, lodging taxes, and property taxes. Limit short-term rental occupancy based on septic capacity. Ensure there is sufficient fire and EMS and police capacity to serve existing and new short-term rentals. Locate short-term rentals where other transient accommodations, which would be hotels and motels, are appropriate. Let the market decide. Increase options for other transient accommodations, hotels, motels, to include kitchens and laundry amenities. Create a formal short-term rental group to self-regulate issues such as noise, garbage, recycling, burn restrictions. These are all appropriate to consider and talk about at a countywide level, right? These are all countywide. These are not Packwood-specific things, which really does reaffirm that the Packwood Subarea Plan is not the place to figure out how we address short-term rentals, right? The discussion, that discussion really is a county discussion, not a Packwood-specific discussion. Next slide. But there was one idea that did get some traction, and we talked about it. There was not unanimous agreement about this, so this is not a recommendation. This is just where the group was getting some traction, and it is specific to Packwood, right? So something that could go in the plan. This idea comes from this assumption that the overarching goal of Packwood, the Packwood Plan, is to create and preserve affordable housing options. And for the purpose of this discussion, what we're really talking about here is multifamily housing options that are more affordable than single-family housing options. And multifamily is a building or a group of attached buildings having three or more dwelling units that is not designated or used for transient accommodations. That's multifamily residential. Multifamily housing includes apartments, fourplexes, triplexes, duplex, or not duplexes, sorry, triplexes, row houses, hostels, and dormitories. So that's the breadth of what you would consider multifamily. Everything from a triplex up to an apartment complex. Multifamily housing is considered more affordable because the cost burden of housing is shared by multiple people or families versus a single-family residential unit is, the cost burden is borne by that single person or that family who has that burden on them. So that's why it's considered more affordable. Short-term rentals are usually, not always, usually, single-family houses. Right? So affordable housing and single-family, when it comes to short-term rental, aren't necessarily in the same category that we're talking about. Next slide. So the goal would be to make sure that newly-built multifamily housing is preserved for long-term residency, not used for short-term rental. For example, new six-unit apartment complexes built. Make sure that that cannot be high-end condos for short-term rental use. Make sure that it is actually apartments, right? Because the state definition of short-term rental is 30 days or 30 or fewer consecutive nights, long-term is there for 31 days or more is long-term rental. So that picks up your seasonal folks in that long-term rental. A three-month rental is a long-term rental under the state definition. There was not unanimous agreement about this in the group. This is just where the group was starting to coalesce and have a conversation. Again, if you remand it, they're going to work on that, and they're going to see if this is really where they want to propose a policy or if there's another route, or if they really feel like this is just a county issue. But I did want you to know where the conversation was going, and I'm going to pause there and let you guys ask questions of me or our advisory committee reps that are here.
Anybody have a question up here? No? Frank, do you have a question?
No, Lori, I don't. Sorry, I'm kind of distracted. I'm here at C-TAC waiting for my ride.
Oh.
But no, everything that Mindy said makes sense, and you know, I think we're on track.
Corbin?
Well, no questions that I can think of. I appreciate this overview update recap of everything. Fortunately, I wasn't able to join the in-person meeting in Packwood a couple of weeks ago. And the more I learn, the more I hear, more exciting of a time it sounds like it was. So no, this is very helpful. I don't have any questions at this point in time.
Okay, Gretchen?
I don't, not at this time. I do have questions about the other two topics, but we're not there yet, correct?
Okay.
This is Barb Russell, Prosecutor's Office. I would add that for multifamily housing, short-term rentals already would fall under transient accommodation for State Department of Health regulation if there's three or more units under common ownership. So you're already going to see that in most multifamily settings. You're going to see that classified more as a hotel or a lodge rather than as a multifamily housing. So just a thought on how that gets categorized.
Yes, thank you.
I had a question. You said that you would identify some of the impacts the group would get together. Like, what would be an example of an impact?
The group was asking that before we start coming up with policies, that we understand more about what the real impacts of short-term rentals are and things like housing.
You mean like if there's no permanent housing available because everything's short-term or?
Right, to just understand that more. And I think that that is a very appropriate next step. I don't think that that's something that we can necessarily do just Packwood-specific because Packwood is not its own jurisdiction. It's very hard to pull data. It is something countywide that we can continue to do analysis of. And this is something that many other counties have an interest in as well and are also doing analysis. So you know, again, I think a lot of where the advisory committee did land last time and is still landing is this is more of a countywide issue. It's not, I mean, yes, it's being felt in Packwood the most because Packwood is a tourist destination and has a lot of short-term rentals, but the questions and the solutions are countywide questions and solutions for the most part, so.
Because it could be anyplace else in the county eventually.
Mineral has short-term rentals. Morton has short-term rentals. Yeah, I mean, yes, Packwood has a very large percentage of short-term rentals right now, but it is a bigger discussion than just Packwood.
And then the other thing that I noticed when you had the list of all the things they were going down, I was just thinking, how would you ever police or regulate, you know, if somebody is on a three-bedroom septic that they can only have six people in the house? I mean, we certainly are not doing that for permanent residents. So I just would say that, you know, some of the, it seemed like there was something else too. It's not in front of me. But some of them, I would say, you know, you just have to make sure you understand that it's going to be very hard to police it. So if you can't police it, you may not really want to.
If short-term rentals are classified as a business, then we can require the septic be evaluated as a business septic.
Yeah, but if.
Prior to approving, if it's like a special use or something like that, that we can require that they be evaluated for the additional load.
And other counties and communities have done a capacity approach. And so they've essentially said, like, I think it's Olympia says that you can have, your capacity is maxed at two persons per bedroom plus an additional, depending on how many bedrooms you have. They give you, it's like a ratio that goes up with that. But I think, without getting into too many details, because, you know, how would we implement something is always a question. But it is very important when we think about, when you're thinking about the policy, you do need to ask, is it possible to implement it? Is there a regulatory way to implement things? And can we enforce? Those are two just basic questions we need to ask ourselves and make sure we feel like whatever policy is there, there's an avenue for implementation and enforcement that's reasonable. So like I said, that was just a smattering of brainstorming. We didn't assess any of them.
I just looked. I thought, boy, you better hire a couple of code enforcement that live up there as well because, you know.
Even more important, I think, is that most of the people who visit short-term rentals don't have any idea how a septic system works or what they can put in it. Every time my brothers come visit, I give them a lecture about what they can and cannot put in my septic system. So I don't even think that, there's things that you don't have much control over too that.
Well, and that's equal with renters, you know, or homeowners, you know, especially non-traditional gravity-feed septics. Nobody really understands how to run those things properly. So, you know, it's. Okay.
I do have one more question. I just thought of, so Mindy, my understanding in conversation with you is that these zoning designations that the CAC came up with do not currently exist in the county anywhere. And you're going to make them exist. Will that not be countywide also? Like, is that going to be Packwood-specific? Or is that also going to be implemented in other communities in Lewis County? And how does that work?
No, that's a great question. The land use designations that we're proposing, the land use designation map, do not exist in Lewis County at this time. These would be brand-new designations. And therefore, in order to implement them, we have to write brand-new zoning codes. We have to write brand-new development regulations for them. Those development regulations would only apply where those designations apply. And at this time, that would only be the Packwood Subarea Plan boundary area, right? That doesn't mean that we wouldn't necessarily go to another community and do a subarea planning process. And it turns out, oh, hey, some of the designations we used over in Packwood would work really great in, I mean, I'm making things up. I don't know, on Alaska or something. Maybe they would. And so then you could use that same thing and just change the map, and the same development regulations would apply. But at this time, Packwood is the only place we're looking at.
So then, like, I don't know if these two are relatable, but you're talking about how regulation would not be allowed to be, regarding short-term rentals, would not be allowed to be just Packwood-specific, but this land use and zoning and regulations somehow are allowed to be just Packwood-specific. Is there any correlation between those two, or could you?
Absolutely. So this potential policy that's on the board, ensure that newly-built multifamily is preserved for long-term residency. In rural areas, if there's no sewer, you can't have multifamily housing, right? So a policy like this applies where you can have multifamily housing, which would be where the sewer is going in. And the way that you could potentially implement this is you say, again, I'm making things up, but you say that downtown designation, the mixed-use designation that's red on the map that goes in the downtown area, which is mostly where sewer is going to be, you simply say that there can't be any short-term rentals in that space. Right? So that applies to Packwood. Because that's the only place without designation.
Is that still, so the way it's written right now, which I understand is phase, you know, draft number one, it's just addressing the multifamily housing. But for example, the Mill property and the Huntington Road property are proposing a ton of new single-family residences, potentially, not a ton, but many. And so there's no.
You're right. Absolutely, absolutely. So this is why the advisory committee has not made a recommendation. They are not settled on this. I'm just saying that this is where we coalesced around one potential option. We talked about a whole bunch more. The advisory committee does not have a recommendation for you guys on this. This is why we want you to remand it. Because you're right, there's more to talk about.
And to be very clear, I am not allowed to join that conversation.
That is right. So when we get to the end, maybe we can talk a little bit more about what is appropriate, not appropriate for you guys at this point, in the, how you talk to people. Because this is legislative, so it's really weird. It's not as cut and dry. Like quasi-judicial is hard, but it's really clear. It's like really clear. This isn't as clear. So yeah, don't let me forget to come back to that, though, please. Should we move on?
Yep, please.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, which we move on to Mill property. Okay, let's go to the next slide, which we move on to Mill property. Okay, so I know these two maps are not the same. The colors are different. I'm aware of that. I'm going to try and walk you guys through this a little bit. The map on the right is the designations, um, that the advisory committee started to coalesce around. Again, we do, there's no recommendation here, but there started to be some agreement around that. The map on the left is what the owners asked for. So let me kind of walk through it. The yellow and the gray, the yellow on the left map, the gray on the right map are the same designation, commercial business district. The advisory committee would like slightly more land preserved for commercial than the owners had proposed. The blue in the owner's map and the dark purple on the, uh, more official-looking map is high-density residential. That's, those are the same designation. The advisory committee moved that down from where the owners had it, so they could add more commercial. So they were looking at adding more commercial, so they moved the high-density down in the map. The pink on the left and the light purple on the right is medium density. There's slightly less of it in the advisory committee's proposal than what the owners had asked for. The green in the owner map and the pink in the CAC map, that's low-density, and they're exactly the same in both maps. So again, advisory committee would like to work on this. They, they had a lot of conversation about how much commercial should be preserved for Packwood for growth. Um, they agree with the owners that there should be a split, that it shouldn't all be commercial. But they did not agree amongst themselves about what that split really should look like, and they want more time to think about that. Any questions about that one? I'm saving the juicy one for last. Any questions about Mill site? Gretchen's hand is up. No? Okay.
Is there a reason why the, um, the residences are further away from downtown than the commercial? Is that not an easy flip? Um, is that gray commercial zone, the contaminated piece of the property and therefore not suitable for residences? Or I kind of thought the plan, I thought the plan was more about having the, um, houses, density of houses closer to the downtown.
Absolutely. That, that is definitely, the plan really was pushing for most of the density of housing down, uh, in the downtown area closer to that space. I don't have specifics on, um, contamination of the site. But you're right, it is easier to clean up to commercial standards than to clean up to residential standards. Um, I think part of the idea around the high-density residential, and I will let either of our advisory committees chime in on this, because I'm off-the-cuff remembering. There's a lot of talk about in the downtown area and in that space down there, to keep everything at a scale of what is there now. So these are small structures, they're two-story structures. So it wouldn't be appropriate to put really anything, I mean, gosh, even like a 10-unit apartment complex is going to be awfully big for that downtown area. It's going to be very small-scale. The idea around the Mill space was that this would be a place that's more appropriate to have larger scale, larger scale, scale commercial. And in that same vein, maybe some larger-scale, um, apartment complex could go in that space. And therefore, it wouldn't be taking away from the character and the size and scale of the downtown. So I think that's, I don't know if either of you guys, that's what I'm remembering from that conversation, unless you guys want to add in.
So if you look at the proposed map that the Mill owners put forward, that is there on the right, the gray that's on the left-hand side of Highway 12 already exists as an industrial park. And the red that's kind of up to the top is the proposed mixed-use. And so the connectivity between the proposed commercial that's there would make it one larger commercial area instead of, if it was flip-flop, which I think is kind of what Gretchen's getting at, is why the proposed residential component isn't to, closer to town. Gretchen, is that?
Yes, yeah, but I see your, I see the point across the highway as industrial at, right now.
The industrial park's already there. And so if you just extend it across the highway, that just makes more connectivity and more of a commercial zone instead of it being really chopped up.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, but again, no resolution. We only met for two hours, so we had like thirty, forty minutes on each topic, so it's pretty rushed. Okay, let's move to Huntington Road.
Um, I just have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please.
Um, I'm just curious, um, with some of these proposed changes, is this something that you guys have been in conversation with the property owners about? And are they, has everybody been pretty amenable to trying to negotiate that out, or?
Yeah, so I sent, I sent this, I made sure that both of these property owners saw the staff report. They're on, I mean, we have this big mailing list of all interested parties, so they were on that list. But then I emailed them again and said, hey, take a look at this and let me know if you have any questions about what we're having a conversation about. I want to make sure that I'm protecting our advisory committee, right? They need to have this conversation based on what is appropriate for land use for Packwood long-term. And just like when we talk, when we talk about this quasi-judicial and we say, the owner doesn't necessarily matter as much, because they could turn around and sell. So it's like a weird balancing act where we don't want, we don't want them lobbied by individual property owners to try and push them to do something that is only in that property owner's interest. But at the same time, I think it is important that all property owners in all of Packwood are aware of what we are doing and have all the opportunities to engage in that process. That's why we've done so much engagement up to this point. So it's, it's a balance.
Yeah, I was more just curious. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, it's not, you know, one person shouldn't sway the whole thing. But I was just curious how, um, cooperative that conversation's been.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Mill owners came in at an odd time, because we were already kind of formulating things. So it was kind of late in the game when they purchased the property, so that was a little bit tough. Whereas other property owners had a longer time to participate, um, in our engagement opportunities. So that's been a little bit strange. Also, I mean, quite honestly, this is 200 acres. This is a pivotal, massive space that changes how development goes in Packwood. So it is critically important that the advisory committee try and get this, this space right. More consequential than, you know, even a 10-acre place. So, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there, there, everybody's, I should say, everybody we're talking with, everybody we've been talking with out here has been really cooperative, very helpful. We've had a lot of, like, at the open house, there was a lot of just sitting down and talking with property owners and sussing through properties and, and the Mill owners have been right in that too. So I think, I feel like everybody's trying really hard to keep it open and have good conversations. Yeah.
I, I have one final question, Mindy, about this, and I'll let us move on. Um, is it within the CAC's realm of, in their purview to say, you know what? I think it'd be really awesome to have a green space in there. Could they designate that? Or do you, are you, um, you don't have to do, you don't have to do what the Mill owners propose, right? That's just a starting point. And then you can, I mean, the CAC really has the power to draw lines wherever they wish or wherever it makes sense for the flow of the town. Is that correct?
Right, so zoning, the next, the next step out of land use designations, that is the county's responsibility. So, and as much as this sounds terrible, you don't need the property owner's permission to zone property. You zone it based on the public good and what's important for the community going forward. So property owners don't necessarily have to agree with it. Gosh, it'd be nice if we got everybody on the same page, though. So we really would like people to be happy with it. Uh, your question about open space, we do have an, um, an open space overlay designation that the advisory committee has applied to parks and some other open space areas. Um, and that is something that could be used here. But the other tool, one of the issues, I think, with trying to figure out like where you would apply that right now, is there isn't any high-quality open space there right now? It's a little bit different. Like, the other places we applied it to would be the community space behind the community hall, the, um, old, uh, uh, recess space behind the museum, the library park, and then the area on the Packwood Station that is the critical areas, the stream in the riparian area on there, which is a really nice, um, natural area. And the Mill just doesn't have something like that. I mean, it was really, you know, it was an industrial mill.
Yeah.
So I guess the other option would be when we get to implementation, so not now, but implementation would be this site, Dennis has mentioned this before. This site through implementation probably deserves some, like, big master planning, right? It isn't, it isn't the same as somebody subdividing four lots and putting in a private road. This is like big development. So we probably want to write something for that. And when you write something like that, you typically require open space. So it's, a lot of times it's a percent of space. Um, sometimes it's based on, like, in residential, sometimes they'll be based on how many people. So space per people might be the ratio. So there's an implementation way to get at it, and I think this space deserves, um, a good master planning approach.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. In a lot of residential developments that I've worked on in other jurisdictions, there is a requirement for some kind of recreational component for a apartment building. They need to put in a big toy or some trails through there or something. So, yeah, the Mill site doesn't have any spectacular things to preserve right now, but as part of the development process, that's something that if it's not in the regulations as far as a formal subdivision is required or a master plan program, then in the zoning, it could be a requirement at that time. Gretchen, does that help?
Yes, yeah, I didn't know when that came into play, like, if you had to be ahead of the game and plop it on a map right now. But it sounds like that could be dealt with down the road as things develop.
Okay. Move to the Huntington Road property. So there was even less agreement about this one. So the other two, we started to kind of coalesce around some ideas that seemed to resonate, and there was kind of a direction, but it wasn't 100% agreement on anything. This one, there was definitely not agreement about this particular one. And it's because, it's because we're talking about properties surrounding an airport, right? So you heard testimony about that. And the question really is, what is the appropriate future land use for properties surrounding an airport? It's not a question about the Huntington Road property. It's a question about all those properties surrounding that airport. The, on the map there, that blue area, the plan has it as gray, which is the commercial business district. The map shows it as what it would look like if it were low-density residential. That's what the property owner requested. They want to talk about this, but they want to talk about it with all the other properties around the airport included. And they feel that this one in particular is one that, that deserves some time. So you heard, you heard, um, from Dave Fleckenstein that there's concern about the types of uses and the compatibility of uses around the airport, airport viability. We talked a lot of the advisory committee about the existing development and existing uses that are very, very close. I mean, that airport is within spitting distance of downtown. So this one in particular, they felt like they needed quite a bit more time with. I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that, like, general overview of this discussion?
Well, I think that the CAC was concerned with the, with this parcel and its proposal. Now, relative to, in relation to the other, uh, low-density properties that you'll see on the west and the north of the airport, those are all existing built-out properties. This is a large vacant property. So to continue that historical trend to the, down onto this property was a question that we were debating or we're, you know, questioning. Uh, the, one of our CAC members is a member, I think, as you recall, uh, or a past representative of the FAA and is very knowledgeable regarding the FAA's, uh, concerns relative to airports. And, uh, he was putting forth his, uh, his thoughts and concerns as related to the FAA, which raised another question. And, and so, again, this is, this parcel and all, as well as the future of the parcels that are to the north of this parcel surrounding the airport, I think are still in question by the CAC. And we need to do some more in-depth analysis of it.
So do you guys have any questions about that one? So before we move to the next slide, which is, um, our potential motion for you guys to make, I just want to go back and touch on, um, Gretchen's question about participation of the, of you guys in the work, if you do decide to send it back to the advisory committee to do continued work. Just like, I don't want the advisory committee lobbied by individual property owners. I also don't want them lobbied by planning commission. Not that any of you guys would be in there lobbying for a particular thing, but I would like them to do their work in the position of trying to suss out what the best approach is for Packwood over the next 20 years, based on the facts that we can pull together for that and present that back to you guys as decision-makers. You know, I mean, I call you decision-makers. You're recommending, you're the first step of the decision-making process. You're making a recommendation to Board of County Commissioners. But to bring that back to you, I would also prefer that, that their meetings not have, like you guys, in attendance to their meetings, because that may sway how comfortable they are just saying what they're going to say and having, it's really ugly sausage-making when we do this kind of work. There's nothing pretty about it. It's like, we're trying to figure it out, you know? And so I think it would be better for them to do that. All of that said, this is legislative. And we have told you, and I, and I do mean it, that you should talk to your constituents about things, right? I should have said when we closed testimony, I didn't say something, my fault, and I should have, I should have been clear that when you take testimony and close testimony, it actually is no longer appropriate to being out there. And, because we've said to the public, thank you, we've heard you, we are now going to deliberate and make a decision. So then going back and hearing from them or having them communicate with you, it's, it's not like we're at an illegal moment. It's just not appropriate. And I didn't really communicate that, so I'm really sorry about that. And everybody's fine, what they've been doing to this point. But I would say, if we move back into advisory committee work, you guys will go back into the role you had before. Yes, you can talk to your constituents. Yes, Gretchen, when people come into the coffee shop and want to ask you questions, or you want to ask some questions, you go right ahead and do that. Um, we probably would plan at least one more, just generalized public engagement type of event. Some, I don't know what it'll look like. Maybe it's an open house, maybe it's something different. I'm not sure what it is at this point. It would be very appropriate for, you know, not a, well, no, it could be a forum. We just have to make sure we noticed it as a, as a full public meeting. For you guys, you could come to that, because it's just a public open house. Gray area. I don't know, Barb, if you want to chime in on my gray area of legislative stuff. Other questions about that? I know I'm not being like, it's, this one is not one where we can just cut and dry it.
Not everything legal is advisable.
Right.
That's all.
That's all. We want to, we want to follow the being, having the fairness of fairness. We want to try to be fair. I guess that's the bottom line. I'm not being as like, do this, don't do this, as you might want. Does that help, Gretchen? Do you have, do you have clarifying questions about that?
I don't. I just, I, maybe I just wanted to, to let everyone know that I, when I asked at the very end of the March 14th meeting, it's, so you're telling me this is not quasi-judicial, correct? And you said, correct. And then I just saw. And you said, correct. And then I just saw that as a green light to say, all my friends on the CAC, what do you all think about this? I need more information. So I, I didn't know that the CAC was going to reconvene. And I don't know if they knew that at the time either. And so I thought I was just doing my job of like talking to my constituents. Turns out, it's not quite that. Yeah, that wasn't quite how that ended up going, so.
Yeah, and again, you, this, the blame sits with me. It does not sit with you. I, I should have been clearer about the fact that we had closed testimony. There was nothing wrong about what, what you did. It, it probably wasn't the most appropriate thing to do, but nobody advised you against doing it. And no one knew at that point whether or not we were going to reconvene the advisory committee. It wasn't until I sent out the email that I, that I knew, oh shoot, we better get everybody together.
Yeah. And, and I think the piece that I didn't quite understand either was the closing of the testimony meant that there, there should no longer be further discussion.
Yeah, and that's my fault. It's my fault for not communicating that well.
Yeah.
If, it's not exactly legal advice, but if I was in your situation, I would listen more than I speak and say things like, I hear your concerns and we will consider them. You shouldn't be committing to anything before there are decisions made, but receiving information is not at this point illegal. Discussing it is not illegal. There's nothing going to be added into the record and your decision does need to be based on what's in the record, except now it probably will be. If they're going to do more work on it, then there will be things added into the record. It's not, it's not an area of legality.
Yeah, it's tough. It almost makes quasi judicial seem lovely again, doesn't it? No, I'm kidding. Nobody wants that back. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So again, Gretchen, I, it was squarely my fault that, that I was not clear about that specific, we've closed testimony and this is how we're proceeding. And I, I am sorry about that. And you've legally done absolutely nothing wrong, so don't worry about it. And if you do remand it, then I would say go back to how you were behaving before, which is absolutely talk to your constituents, but let the advisory committee do their work. So they can bring back some good recommendations for you guys to consider. I should also say, if you do decide to remand this back to the advisory committee, we will have a new hearing and that means testimony, right? So the, the public will have a full opportunity to testify again. So we would be just doing a brand new hearing on that. So I just want to make sure any of the public that's listening, if the advisory committee does decide to recommend a policy on short-term rentals, the public has an opportunity to testify on that specifically, right? So anything new or changed or other parts of the plan. So let's go to the next slide. I did prepare a potential motion to remand. Of course, this is entirely you guys. This is yours to decide what you want to do. You, you can do this or you can take another route. And if you want suggestions on a different route, myself and Barbara here to help you with that, or you can take the remand option.
Does, does anybody on the commission want to make that motion or does anybody have any further discussion or question?
I will do so. I move to close the hearing on the Packwood Severia plant with no recommendation and remand the plan to the community advisory committee for further discussion on the land use designation map, particularly the properties surrounding the airport and the short-term rentals.
Second.
Was that a second, Frank?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. Jason will second it and.
Yes, it, yes, it was a second. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm trying to hit buttons on my phone while driving.
Fine. Let's go ahead and vote. Jason?
Aye.
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Very good.
So just to close that out, we will reconvene the advisory committee. By the way, thank you so much. I think the advisory committee really appreciates this extra time that you've given them to not feel rushed and to bring this back. I do not want to drag this out. It is actually important that we close the planning portion of it so we can move to the implementation portion. There's no deadline looming out there like some state deadline, but we do want to be in advance of sewer. Because as I've said before, sewer will drive growth out here. And it's really important that this community has the plan in place to guide that growth as it occurs. So we, we don't want to drag it out. So I'm looking at three to four meetings, probably. I don't want to commit to a specific number because again, we don't want to force the rush here, but probably three to four meetings. So we'd be looking at being back in front of you guys, August, September-ish timeframe. So. Okay.
All right. So the next agenda is workshop on the population and housing allocations.
Back to me. Okay. I'm not going to do a presentation. I'm not even going to walk through the memo in any specificity. I wanted more to just let you guys know the conversation that's going on and why it's kind of a fun, hairy conversation. Because again, it's sausage making and it's lovely to watch. The, oh, which is scooch behind me there. Don't trip on that cord. I've done that. Yes. Okay, so we've talked to you guys about population and housing allocations a number of times, so I'm not going to go into the like, why is this so important piece? The, the thing that is challenging right now is that Office of Financial Management gives all counties a range. They essentially, they do a lot of analysis. They are definitely the experts in this. They've been doing it for a long time. They do an analysis to come up what they think is the likely population growth for the next 20 years. And, and they do this every five years. It's an iterative process, right? And then they take that, that likely and they bracket it high and low, which is, it's just a standard deviation. It's just straight statistics, right? It's not a, it's not like they project what your high would be and project what your low would be. They project what they think is going to happen and bracket it. And they give that to the county. We have to pick in that bracket, right? And if we don't, it creates a lot of other process issues. Well, here's the thing. Lewis County is growing a lot. And the cities have given me their analysis of what they think their projection is. And it's above the high. It's above OFM's high at this point. In particular, Chehalis is anticipating a lot of growth. I mean, like a staggering amount of growth is what they're predicting. And I did send out the memo with their attachment. Their memo was in there about their explanation why they think that is how they're going to grow. It does blow up the OFM high. Just tosses that one right out the window. So we are having conversations with OFM. We're having conversations internally. What are the processes? What are the options here around this particular thing? I think all of the cities want to plan smartly because what number you pick for population, not only does that feed into housing, that's a direct feed into the housing model. It also is what you use to do your capital facilities planning, right? So if you pick too low, it makes it hard to plan for your anticipated growth in terms of sewer and water and transportation, right? But if you pick too high, all of a sudden you're trying to, you know, get money out of people for something you're never going to achieve. So you, being right is important. So the cities have good reason to be correct about their numbers. So I don't believe that they are inflating or deflating the numbers. I think they're trying to be as good as they can be about their numbers. I don't know where we're going to land. I don't have an answer. I know that we're, we are talking about it with OFM. What are the processes if we're going to petition for something above the high? We're talking about internally what that means. The complicating factor is that we can't run the housing model with a number over OFM's high. So Commerce has created a model that if you put in a number above that top OFM number, the model just shuts down. It doesn't run for you. It just, it gives you nothing. So because the law says you have to pick between these two, between these numbers. So we have to resolve this really quickly so that we can run the housing model. So we can give, so then we can get going on this process coming forward. So we're, we're just, we're in a little, a little like, figure out the process point of things. So I just wanted to give you guys that update. I don't have any more specifics for you on it. We will share as we know.
Cindy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question then. If Chehalis and Centrilia, the county at large, is expecting such a huge population increase, that probably means that other jurisdictions are going to experience a housing decrease. But I think, I mean, are a lot of people moving down from Seattle, moving up from Portland? I mean, first, the Portland migration wouldn't, wouldn't change anything, but you know, is there a way to compensate and get some of their population allocation to raise our proceeding?
Yeah, there's no competition between the counties in terms of allocation. They're all, but you're, okay, so let me go back to, you're right. Some of the population that we're seeing moving into our area is coming particularly from the South Sound area, I would say, because you can drive there to work. But we're less expensive to live in, so we're seeing that. We are seeing people moving up from Clark County area up to this space too. So we are getting both of those populations moving in here. There isn't any, there isn't any mechanism for saying, hey, we're going to take allocation from another county. I think the allocations, I think probably OFM's work includes not just the population movement within the state, but also in migration and out migration, right? So I, in, you know, I want, I want to believe as much as I can, OFM, they are very smart. They do this work. I think the, the difference is, is that each of our jurisdictions is looking at their land capacity. They're looking at the trends over the past couple of years. They're looking at what they want to be able to plan for in their capital facilities plan. And they're just seeing our growth is higher than what OFM is projected. Yeah.
I'm just curious, how much over the high? Is it substantial?
Yes.
Okay.
Eleven thousand over the high. It's big.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a little. It's not like we're asking for 10 more people.
Yeah. Well, I'm not surprised, but I was just curious.
It's not surprising, you know, when we did the first round, our numbers were sitting right on the median. But I was looking at like Winlock and Toledo's population. I was like, well, that's just wrong. Toledo's going to grow by more than 700 people in 20 years. That's ridiculous. They're going to grow by a lot more than that. So they did their own analysis and yes, they're going to grow by a lot more than that. And they gave that, you know, Winlock, the same thing. It's like the numbers that came out of just base math were just wrong. Based on what I just anecdotally knew about these communities. And then they just came back with the data to demonstrate correct. They are growing faster than what OFM is predicting. Yeah, but yeah, Chehalis's number is very, very big.
Chehalis in particular, because that number, you know, stands out. But does it really, it, it doesn't really, Chehalis is not really saying we are going to grow based on past history or what, what, aren't they actually saying we have this much property that we've allocated? And then they've given 24 units per acre, which means a multifamily, doesn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. So that, we know they're not going to build multi-family on every acre up on Raindrop. We know they're not going to build it on every acre at the golf course. So.
So they did a 50% takeout. They did a land capacity analysis and then took away half the capacity. That's, that is the analysis that they provided.
And do they have no options? Because that means they've got to like double their fire, their water, their school. Everything's got to really step up.
Triple.
Okay.
It's a tripling.
Yeah. So do they have any option to say no? Or is it too late because they've already let that UGA or those, those areas into?
You absolutely can say no if you cannot serve it. If you cannot, literally cannot provide sewer to it because your wastewater treatment plant has no capacity, then you're going to say no. Unless if, you know, the developer's adding up 20 million to expand your sewer plant.
Yeah. So that's what I don't really.
I mean, capacity, it typically is the fact that infrastructure and capacity is what slows growth. I mean, even in Packwood, that's what's slowing growth. There's no sewer, right? I mean, that's the benefit of not having infrastructure is it slows down growth.
So is this actually, are we actually producing what the state is mandating? Like, okay, yeah, there's going to be a, a place for a lot more houses or are we just saying, we could?
This isn't, no, no, this is what Chehalis is saying has nothing to do with state anything. This is them saying this is how we anticipate to grow. So the state, the state housing.
If we have the sewer and the, and all of this, the infrastructure.
Correct.
If we have, yeah.
Right. And what they would say if they were here is we have, we would like to put those numbers in because then we can put them in our capital facilities plan, which means we can ask for the loans and the grants to build the infrastructure to support this. That's what they would tell you if they were here right now. That's why they're do, that's why they're saying, you know, this is what we think we can support and growth if we can create the infrastructure to do it. I'll be candid. I would be shocked if they could create the infrastructure to support a tripling of their growth, right? I lived in Battleground for 20 years from 2000 to 2020. And they went from 9,800 to 21,000. So they doubled. And it was an extreme amount of growth. I mean, it was crazy how much Battleground grew in those 20 years was crazy amount of growth. Really hard to keep the infrastructure up on that one, right?
And how did they do on affordable, the affordable part of their housing? Were they successful in providing new options in that or?
Battleground, there's, as I say, there's, there's a number of apartment complexes that were built. So there was, there was some affordable housing, but like most of Washington State, the vast majority of housing that's gone in over the past 20 years has been single family residential. So the vast majority is single family residential. They did, they do have some multifamily areas, particularly right around the two highways, right? That intersect there. But this is the conversation that we're having with Chehalis. I mean, I'm asking similar questions of them, like, really?
So it sounds like you're saying they're still massaging these numbers and.
We are, we are having a lot of internal conversations about numbers, infrastructure, and most of that conversation is with Chehalis because if you take away their explosion of population, even if you were to just double their population, we could probably still hit the high OFM number and be okay. So we are, we are having lots of conversations with them. We're talking with OFM about what does the process look like if we do want to try and go above? Having conversations with Centrilia because there are other big jurisdictions. So this has big implications for them too. Yeah.
And if we go with the OFM high number, then in five years, we go through this process again, then we'll have a new low median and high. So I mean, it's not like this is a once and done, right, for 20 years.
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. I, I have mentioned that as well to all of the cities. We do this every five years because you, this is, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what we're really going to grow, right? We can think, oh, great, we're going to grow awesome for the next five years. And this, and then all of a sudden like massive recession and everything just screeches to a halt. And then, you know? So it is every five years, we recalibrate all of our populations. So that is part of the conversation that we're having with Chehalis is like, do you really think that these are the numbers that you're going to be able to support and hit over 20 years? Or do you want to take a lower number that puts us at the OFM high? Knowing that in five years you get to say, oh no, wow, we did, boy, we developed all Raindrop. And done, we just added, you know, 2,000 people, which is still a huge amount for, for Chehalis. That's a huge. which is still a huge amount for, for Chehalis. It's a huge population increase. Again, if I were just channeling Chehalis right now, their response back would be, we need to start planning and studying now for capital facilities to support the 20 years of growth so that we can start working on the loans and the grants now. So that is, that is what they would say back to us saying in five years, you get to change it.
So Mindy, my question is, if you're saying that about every five years that this projection is done, have, has anyone gone back 10 years and looked at whether they met those projections? The last five years where we are against those projections? And if they're just targeting for more money for capital improvements, that's really not what the goal should be, right?
No, the goal is to make sure that you calculate your population accurately so that you can plan your capital facilities accurately. If you undercount, if you just say, yeah, we'll take something less than we really think we're going to grow because it makes the math work out, then you're not planning your capital facilities for how much you think you're going to grow. So that's what Chehalis would say. Um, all the analysis that I did to produce the first round of, um, 20-year projections for everybody was based entirely on past growth and the past growth trends. The, the trouble is, is that we've been, our growth is amping up. So since, so when you look at 20 years, you know, 10 years, 20 years back, it dampers the overall growth trend. And since, really since COVID, since 2020, our growth has been shooting up in all, all the jurisdictions. There's no reason to believe that, I fully support that all of our jurisdictions are growing faster than OFM projects. Absolutely.
Right? But even with Chehalis, it looked like they wanted like 65% of the share. And it's like, you're going to grow 22,000 more people? I mean.
Remember too, I mean, we have more census data and things like than just the last 20 years, but Lewis County has only been planning under the GMA for 20 years. So some of this is growth pains.
Yeah. Yeah. And a lot of, you know, a lot of places don't ask for anything over the OFM highs. So I think I have OFM scratching their head too on how do we process this? So. Anyway, I just wanted to, you guys, I wanted to give you an update. Want to know where, where we're at? Nothing about it is pretty. All right.
Is that it?
That's it. That's it. I don't have.
To be continued.
Right. I don't have like some definitive thing.
We have job security here. All right. Uh, let's see. Is there anything for the good of the order, Mindy?
Yes. There's always something for good of the order. Um, let's see here. What do I want to start with? Um, oh, we didn't receive any rezone requests and there are no UGA requests. So woo woo. None of those this year that we have to process. Which is, I know, I mean, we did seven last year and none this year. So yeah, it'd be kind of nice if we could do like three a year instead of piling seven into one year. That was too much. But I'm really glad that we're not doing it right now because I got my hands full with this like population housing business to do. So your docket has been updated. Um, I didn't print it out. I will bring it back to you guys next time. But the docket's been updated to remove. We had some holds in the docket for hold for potential UGA reason. Those have been removed. Um, and then we're going to push the RV campground code out a month. So that's on your docket. We're coming back with some changes to the RV campground code. We're going to push that out a little, a month so we can do a little bit more public engagement around that one before we bring it to you. So I'll print out your docket next time. There is a, there is a, oh, nevermind. I said, there is one online. Thank you. Megan's got me. Anytime I'm confused, Megan's got it covered. Um, the, there is a copy of the docket that we put online. So here it is. I'll just, I'll get it printed and sent over to you guys who can take a look at it. But essentially we've just removed some things and then we pushed. This pushes Packwood out. I had a, I had an ink cleaning. You guys would agree to let the advisory committee do more work on it. So I went ahead and pushed them out. So this pushes Packwood out a bit. This pushes the campground code out a little bit. So we've updated your docket. It's kind of nice because it, it, it'll make our meetings a little less long, which is really good. Cause we've had, our meetings have been too long.
Yeah.
Everyone agrees. We've been, we've been here too late. Okay. The other question, so here's a fun question. We are updating our policy on light refreshments to provide to meetings like you guys. So there is an opportunity potentially in the future that we can provide something more substantial than chips and water. I'm very excited about that. Not that you don't love Lay's potato chips and water. But here's my question to you guys. Do you want something like, if we were to provide sandwiches, would you guys want to like come a little early and eat like something real sandwiches or tacos or something like that? Or we could provide just more of like cheese platter and crackers and some fruit? Or, you know, do you guys typically just eat before you show up here? You know, I guess I'm just looking to you guys, like what, what do you want me to do with this piece of stuff?
All right. Kathy, go ahead.
Well, I like what she's having. I can smell it. Cake she had, but no, no.
Cake for every meal.
I'm sorry.
No, I like the idea of the cheese and fruit. I think that's good. I don't normally eat before I come up here. I'll grab something when I go home, but I think, you know, cheese and fruit and maybe, maybe sandwiches too. I don't know, but that smelled good.
Well, I'm, I know what Frank's going to say. We don't even need to ask him. Jason?
Oh Lori, come on. If you, I told Mindy online, I said, if you bring the pizza, I'll bring the cobbler.
Yes, that's what I was thinking you'd say. Jason? No? Yeah.
What I don't want to do is, is commit to providing like sandwiches or tacos or something like that. And then nobody eats anything like that would just be a waste of money. So I only want to provide what you guys want to have to sustain you from 6:00 PM until 7:30 or 8:00 PM at night.
I, I usually eat before I come, so I don't really need anything. But if Frank brings cobbler, I'll eat it.
I know I'm not your target audience, but I would suggest non-perishable.
Yeah.
So you can carry it over from one session to another.
You guys probably more important because you're coming right from work and having to come here and then travel so far going home, but.
But this isn't for us. So this specifically is for.
Oh, you're not going to get to dip into it.
I mean, we can probably sneak a piece of cheese or something, but we, we typically grab something on, before we show up here, we grab some.
So it sounds like kind of maybe more, you know, something more light and.
Okay. So stick with snacks. No, no.
Some more healthy options, maybe.
Maybe healthier. Yeah, yeah, really.
Because, you know, I, I, I need.
Yeah, we need to save our, 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 ourself for the cobbler.
Yeah, yes.
I'm hearing no cake.
No, now nobody's, no to the cake. Did anybody say no to cake?
Well, we'll start. I think, I think that sounds like a yay for maybe cheese and.
Why don't you mix it up? Just mix it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just mix it up. And then, you know, plan on, on the 80 or 90%, you know, participation rate.
I, I hate you to spend your, your, your time, you know, shopping for us because really we can go without.
Absolutely. But you guys are unpaid volunteers that suss out some of our more hairy, difficult things that we have to do. I mean, this is.
Okay. Well then bring beer.
If whiskey and seven.
She wants whiskey and soda. Just do the full bar there.
There's, there's, that's a whole different policy. The whole different.
Lori, you, I've never known you to go from one extreme to the other.
I'll tell you what, once we're all off the clock, I'd be happy to have, for me, a glass of wine with somebody, but. Um, okay. Well, thank you for that. We will continue to provide snacks. We will provide some other healthy options to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Planning Commission, anybody have anything for the good of the order? Gretchen, Corbin, Frank?
I don't.
All right. The next meeting is April 11th. And the agenda items will be an update on the rural housing alternative. And, uh, anything else?
Um, hopefully I will be able to give you more clarity on the population piece. On April 11th, we'll see.
And, uh, Mindy's asking if, uh, any of the commissioners know at the time, at this time that they will not be present at that meeting. That is April 11th.
I just checked my calendar and I will be.
Okay. So it looks pretty good. Looks like everybody's here. I'll check real quick. That's coming up. Yeah, I'm here. I'm not going to Hawaii after all. Okay. Anything else, Mindy? Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn?
No, both.
Great. Meeting's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.